Good evening. We call board of the regular meeting West Valley City Council. We note that we have all council members present. We will begin with an opening ceremony by council member Jacob Petisima.
Thank you, Mayor. For our opening ceremony tonight, we've invited Abid Ajannet from the Watlau Buddha Lam Temple here in West Valley City to offer his invocation. I'll turn it over to you now.
Should we stand? Should we stand?
ขอเบียร์พระวรรคสเลปุทาลัมวุฒิโบอาจารย์กุมพเนกมีสิสุภัน Want to want to thank you, the councillor, for inviting us to join your meeting.
อาตมามีความทุกข์สึกดีใจแต่ผู้ภาคภูมิใจที่ได้มาไหวพรให้แก่พวกทานที่เข็มแข้งฮับไส้ประซาซนและประเทศชาติสืบต่อไป
Warm and hot felt it. Still, we we thank you for this opportunity and for all the members.
ได้โอกาสต่อไปอาตมาจะได้ให้พรเป็นภาษาบาลีว่ามโนบุพพังคัมมาธัมมามโนเสถามโนมัญญามนาสาทีปทุทเคนะกาซาติวาโลกาติวาตาโตนังถูกคำมันเวทีหมายความว่าทำทั้งหลายมีใจเป็นหัวหน้ามีใจเป็นใหญ่สำเร็จแล้วก็ย้อนใจถ้าหากจิตใจเซาะใส่แล้วเฮาจะยืนจะเดินจะนั่งจะนอนก็เซาะใส่และก็มีความสุข
Before we give blessing in Pali language, we want to we want to be able to wish everyone prosperity with wealth and happiness. And I would like to read something for the councillor. Mind is forerunner of all evil conditions. Mind is chief and they are mind made. If with an impure mind one speaks or acts, then pains follows one even as the wheel, the hoof of the ox. Mind is the forerunners of all good and conditions. Mind is chief and they are mind made. If with pure mind one speaks or acts, then happiness follows one even as the shadow that never leaves.
ก่อนจะให้พรขอให้ทุกทานจึงได้จะมื้อนตาก็ได้ลับตาก็ได้และกำหนดอยู่ที่ลมหายใจเข้าออกทำจิตใจให้ว่าง
Before we give blessing, please put your palms against your chest and lower your head a little bit. And before we begin giving blessing, count on similar to meditation, breathe in, breathe out, and as smoothly as possible.
ตัวยันต์โตโกเดยามูเลสักกายานังนันติวัตตานูเฮวังตาวังวิสัยโยโหเฮสัยอะโซสัยอะมังลีอะปะลาสิตะปะลังเกสิเซปะตาวิปูคอลีอะวิเซเกสะปะปูอะตานังอะคาปะโตปะโมอะตันปะปะสังสูปะติตังสุกันโนสุมาโอโตจัสุนิตังโอมะจาริสุปะทาคินังกายะกามังวัจจะกามังปะทาคินังปะทาคินังมโนะกามังปะนิติตะปะทาคินาปะทาคินานิกะตาวานะลาปันตาเทนอะทาคินีปะวะตุสะปะมังกะลังลาคันตุสะปะเดวะตานุปะปูตานุปะเวนะซาตัสูติปะวันตุเตปะวะตุสะปะมังกะลังลาคันตุสะปะเดวะตัสะปะรัมมานุปะเวนะซาตัสูติปะวันตุเตปะวะตุสะปะมังกะลังลาคันตุสะปะเดวะตัสะปะสังคานุ May good fortune come to your way. May all Titi protect you by the power of the Buddha, Dhamma, Sangha, and God. May you enjoy well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we go to our minutes. We thank you for coming and you're welcome to stay. Not much exciting left on it beyond that. Our minutes of March 26th to the council.
Move for approval of the minutes of March 26th, 2019.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Next, we have three items to take care of on our agenda. The proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We just had a little ceremony out in front where we put in some pinwheels, which we traditionally do each year to symbolize those who are suffering. And so I'll read the proclamation and immediately following that, we'll turn to council member Tom Hoon for the Employee of the Month award. Following that, on Christiansen, we'll do the Division of the Quarter Award. Whereas the children of West Valley are the future of our state's success and investing in their general welfare, safety, and livelihood are but most priority. And all children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment to assure they reach their full potential as they grow and develop. The protection of children and strengthening of families is of concern and responsibility of all West Valley citizens because the wellness of children affects our lives now and will continue to affect us in the future. Child abuse is a serious problem with 755 confirmed child victims in West Valley City last fiscal year. With each of those cases impacting an entire family and affecting the community as a whole. Child abuse respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, or geographic boundaries. All citizens of West Valley City should become more aware of child abuse and its prevention within their respective communities and to actively encourage and support parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Preventing child abuse requires each member of the community to be attentive to the problems around them and commit to doing everything they can to help. The mayor and city council of West Valley City are united in opposition to child abuse in any manner or form all days of the year. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of West Valley City, Utah, on behalf of the city's 136,000 citizens do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in West Valley City and call upon our citizens to renew their commitment to be educated on the impact of child abuse and join in working for its prevention within our communities.
Thank you, Mayor. To my young Isakai pronounce your name right? Okay, great. Co-enforcement and nominated by Cindy Hopps, Executive Administrative Assistant. And to my, why don't you stand up and I will read this one very quick, very short. To my head extending the fine total customer service dealing with family citizens that have received notice that their property is not in accordance with the West Valley City Code can be a tough job. But he always takes the time to clearly explain to his users and never loses his cool. He keeps his homes extremely professional in even the most difficult situations. To my also deals with a few difficult residents that feel they need to bring other people's properties into compliance and complain to my weekly and sometimes daily. He the patient, understanding, and tries to help in every way he can. To my hard work and efforts has enhanced the community which is indicated by his areas in the city improving each year on the code enforcement survey conducted annually every fall. To my has helped mentor new co-enforcement officers and makes each of them feel like part of the division. To my also goes also goes beyond above and beyond his regular duties and arrives to work extra early to remove snow from the sidewalks and walking areas to the community preservation building. He helps make his fellow employees and citizens of West Valley City safer by doing this every snowstorm and has done it since the building opened September 14, 2009. To my is very deserved within of the employee of the month award for all he does. Thank you, To my. Thank you so much. To my, is that someone here with you? Do you want to say a few words? Introduce them? Okay. Are you okay?
Actually, they're probably the reason he does so well. So we appreciate you being here to support him.
Tonight, we're also honoring our Victim Services Division for the Division of the Quarter Award. So those of you in Victim Services, would you please stand? They were nominated by Charlotte Parrott. There've been staffing changes and a lot of people with time off lately in the Victim Services Division. Not once has anyone complained. In fact, each advocate has stepped up and taken on more responsibility with caseloads and office work. Each advocate has stayed late and come in early to help our clients and officers. Whatever task is asked of them by the detectives, attorneys, and police officers, they are ready and willing to get things done as quickly as possible. Our advocates go out of their way to get a hold of each client to make sure everyone gets the resources and services they desperately need. The advocates constantly do little things for clients that no one outside of the office will ever really see or know about till now. But these things make huge impacts for individuals. Our advocates will sneak treats to children in crisis. Give a client their own winter gloves. Slip a few dollars into the pocket of a client desperate for a hot meal. They truly care about each and every individual that comes into our office for services. Each and every client is treated with the utmost respect and compassion. Our advocates will exhaust every avenue when trying to find the right services and resources for each client. They try to have each client leave with a game plan that is feasible and realistic for that person to accomplish. They can have the angriest person come in and through genuine care, that person will leave feeling like they have been truly listened to and that someone does care about them. Congratulations. You saw what To my had to do.
They went up there by height.
It's your time. I saw the previous one. We're expecting it. We have lipstick on. Hey, I got the council to laugh.
Could you scoot over just a little bit and block that number?
I'm tall, I could talk.
There we go. Okay, there we go. I'll have to turn on a fire if you probably can, you know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we go to our comment period. We do have our timer here. Jim, you will first to that. Mr. Bell, well, Chris Bell, maybe it's. Oh, there he is. Okay. Maximum five minutes. Direct your comments to the mayor. It's not question and answer, just your statements. You're probably familiar with it. So first, Mr. Visok.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for what you do. The last few weeks, we all know what's been said about one particular code enforcement officer. You seem to be that one that goes way above and beyond. And that's kind of what I've been asking council, whether it's in a citizens review board or something for the one or two that might not have the training and the something of this officer that we can, you know, consider doing something like this. And I've gone through the West Valley Citizens Academy and found out that our parking enforcement officers have body cameras. Why don't these guys? I mean, they've got a tough job. I've started doing research on what they do and the things that these guys have to do and the people that they confront and stuff like that. I think they should have body cameras. I know the cameras aren't that expensive. It's the retention of what's on the cameras is what's expensive. It's something you guys might want to consider. You guys are talking about budgets and stuff like that coming up. It's kind of a good time to maybe look at something like that. And in our, the West Valley Citizens Police Academy, last week it was brought up. We were in our traffic one. We got to drive the cars, which was a blast. But afterwards, we went and saw the accidents. There's 12 of us in the class and two people brought up 3,100 in the trailer parks about how dangerous it was coming out of there. I did point out that Chief had just done a presentation to you guys about that and there wasn't that many incidents that they were able to find. So if Biden and I told them, I said, "Let the citizens know. They need to report." And let, you know, so you guys can do a review on this area. And I know you guys are setting out to study about the trailer parks and not allowing people to park in. I hope that that keeps proceeding on because it is a need. And so that's what I had today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chris Bell.
Need a new battery or something? There it goes. I want to thank you for allowing me to come up and speak in front of you tonight. I want to thank you for recognizing this month as Child Abuse Prevention Month and for what you did out front, planting the pinwheels. I appreciate that. It's a a part of our community that has a hard time speaking for themselves and knowing who to turn to and making that a priority that we are aware of them. I want to thank you for that. I want to bring up an issue that I think would be good for our city. Recently, in this last legislative session, HB 148 Vehicle Idling Amendments was passed and has been signed by Governor Herbert. Also voting for that were all four members of the legislature that live within West Valley City. Senator Karen Main, Senator Dan Thatcher, Representative Mike Winder, former mayor, and Representative Craig Hall. I think it would be prudent for our city to look into passing some anti-idling ordinance now that it's been made easier to actually enforce such ordinances. Some of the things that were said last week and in previous weeks about code enforcement, I found to be disturbing, especially in reference to code enforcement officer Jill Robinson. I think some of the people who were just up here speaking last week said some things that were very horrible. And that is not the view of the community at large. I want you to know that. I want to I would like the city also to maybe recognize what our wonderful police department did yesterday with that fire, that apartment building. People are alive today because of what they did yesterday morning. And they deserve our respect and our appreciation. And I would like to see, like, I don't know how these Employee of the Month awards go, but I mean, I've got a list of six officers that were listed in articles that went, saw that happen, drove a car, a swat car, through a fence and right up over a bush to help a gentleman escape a burning building. I don't know if it's proper for citizens to nominate someone for Employee of the Month, but those members of the police department are, I think they should be recognized for the service that they've done. Along the lines with what I said about anti-idling, helping our city be a cleaner, better city, I think it would be prudent also if we were able to be a leader in looking at doing something about single-use plastics. I know other cities in the state have looked at doing this. Some of them have implemented ordinances. Some of them are doing studies, multiple-month studies. I would like to see West Valley City join the list of cities in Utah that is taking the lead on this effort. Recently, in the news, there was a whale that washed ashore in Italy. It was a pregnant sperm whale. She had died because she had 49 pounds of plastic that they found in her stomach. Everything that we're using and throwing in the trash is ending up in the oceans. It's killing our planet. I'd like to second what was said about having video recorders with our code enforcement officers. They are doing a service for our city. It is for their protection as well as the protection of our citizens so that we know what is happening. So that if we have a review board, we actually have something other than what this person said and what this person said. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Wanted to make comments in our public comment period? Seeing no one else, then we'll come back explain anything that you want to add.
No, sir. I'm good.
Council members, anything?
Just one note, Mayor. Under Mayor Winder, we did pass a city idling ordinance about eight years ago. So we've, now that we can enforce it, it'll be a little easier.
Thank you. Let's see then. Next on our agenda is the public hearing. This is regarding reopening our fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. This will consider ordinance 19-09. These are reflecting changes in our budget. Most of these are items that we had previously approved and now we have to actually adjust our budget. We will open the budget as we do essentially quarterly. There are also some grants that were provided that we did not have before. And so these are changes to our budget. Although some of them look large, they are items that we've discussed before and are familiar with. So there's not too much there of an unusual nature. Pretty straightforward. So that's the introduction. If there's anyone here, why, we're going to open public comment on this issue. So anyone here to speak to these changes to our budget this quarter? Seeing no one, we will close public comment and we'll bring it back to the council. That's pretty typical, just so you're aware.
Mayor, I'd like to note that when these things come up on our agenda, they're not just being seen tonight for the first time. We've had them for a week and studied them in previous meetings. Actually, had them for about 10 days, studied them in a previous meeting. But with that, I'd like to move for approval of ordinance 1909.
Second, properly before us. And as a note, although we officially reviewed that list last week, many of the items on the list have come to the council over the last several months to be individually reviewed and voted upon. So this is just the official way of doing this, to our budget. They were approved as items before. So received a lot of review by the council. So received a lot of review by the council. Seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilmember Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to resolutions. We have number 19-37. This is an interlocal cooperative agreement between our city and the county for certain funds that were approved. It's called TRCC Funds, Tourism, Recreation, Culture, and Convention. And these are for the Cultural Celebration Center. The amount is $500. This is the net that the county uses to transfer certain funds to the city. That is the issue before us. Some of it will go to operating costs.
Mayor, I think we missed that slightly. It's $500,000.
Oh, what did I say?
$511,000.
$500,000, okay. Ah, what's a few zero zero in there? There's a few numbers. And so, but the balance will go for current new programming costs. Then this money needs to be spent by October of this year. And so that's in general what it's for. We are fortunate to get those funds this year. We go back and apply for those funds on a regular basis. They're available to many cities and organizations within Salt Lake County. Those are funds that are collected from various sources for purposes, but ultimately, citizens and/or people who use those services. I think there's some transient room tax in there and so forth that are funding those. So these go to various different projects primarily related to culture. We don't have too many for convention and things like that. With that introduction then to the council.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 19-37.
Second. Seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have Resolution 19-38, Professional Services Agreement between the city and a company by the name of CMT Engineering Laboratories. This is for professional testing and inspection services. The, our public works and like, do some internal testing, but some of it requires us to go outside. This is for $76,633. For example, soils, field testing, concrete, epoxy dials, masonry, asphalt, concrete paving, structural seal, project management. These items are included in there. They have expertise, and we've used them before, and so we will be using them again. That's the introduction to it. To the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 19-38.
Second.
Properly before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 19-39. This is for one of our ongoing issues. This one is at 2578 South Beasley Circle, which is at 7090 West, for an easement purchase agreement in the amount of $6,700 and a temporary construction easement. This property actually belongs to Salt Lake Community College, but it's one of a number along that lane, that circle, et cetera, that we have been working on as we look to improve the street along there. With that introduction then to the council.
Move for approval of Resolution 19-39.
Second. Properly before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes our regular meeting agenda. We do have two other brief meetings following this. And so we will close this meeting just with a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The regular city council meeting is adjourned.
I call to order the regular meeting of the redevelopment agency. Note that we had an opening ceremony and that all council members and board members are present. First item of business is the approval of minutes from January 8, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, for approval of the January 8, 2019 minutes.
Second.
Properly before us, all in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstaining? Eight minutes have passed. Next order of business is a report from our executive officer. I'll turn it over to Mr. Pla.
I don't have any report tonight, sir. Thank you.
They're getting this in the past.
Thank you. Moving on to a public hearing. Here to accept public input regarding the reopening of the fiscal year 2018 and the 2019 budget. Vice City Manager, for any special notes or anything before opening?
Sure, yes. Thank you, sir. There's really only one item on the budget opening for the city and that's for the purchase of the America First property, the America First Credit Union property that's right here, located at City Hall and in the Fairborn area. We're purchasing that from America First for the purchase price of $850,000, and that'll be acquired out of the RDA fund balance.
Okay. At this point then, the microphone is open for a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak to this Resolution 19-01? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and return to the council for discussion on Resolution 19-01.
Mr. Chair, I would move for approval of Resolution 19-01.
Second.
Properly before us, any discussion? We'll turn it to our recorder for the vote.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
No further business? Open for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we need a second?
No.
Second, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned.
We call to order municipal building authority meeting tonight. Opening ceremony is by a council member, Jay Leir. And we have all members, council members are here tonight, and we have approval of minutes. We have two minutes here, the one on January 8, that's an annual meeting, and also January 15 is special meeting. So I will turn it over to the council member.
Move for approval of the minutes of January 8 and January 15, 2019.
Second.
So we have the motion and we have a second there. As in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
So this motion passes unanimously. Go to Peter Pires, anything you want to say tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
We have one item tonight, it's a public hearing tonight. And we can open the public comment for the fiscal year 2018 and I did purchase. So if anyone wants to speak for that item, please to come forward and to speak for the fiscal year 2018 and I did purchase. Number one, so I close the public comment and I will turn it back to the council member for motion or action.
Mr. Chairman, for approval of Resolution 19-01.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. We'll turn it over to the city recorder for the vote.
Mr. Petis Manu?
Aye.
Ms. Bling?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Hume?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And one last motion.
Move to adjourn.
So in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
So we adjourn.